So, good evening. My name is Shawn Berry. I'm the superintendent of schools here in Tremont. I want to welcome you tonight to our Meet the Candidates event. We have five candidates this year, running for three open spots on the board. Before we get into the question and answer session, I wanted to go over the format for the evening. I've kind of explained it already, but there will be an opportunity to ask questions of these candidates. You can do it via the question card, and then we will try to get your questions addressed that way. I want to thank the PTO for sponsoring the event tonight. There are some snacks in the back. If you would like a snack or some water, feel free to get up and do what you need to do during the event. This shouldn't be too formal of an evening. To start off the night, we are going to have some questions from a group of students, and these students will be coming up to ask their question. This is part of our Student Ambassadors group, who is led by our counselor, Mrs. Weitzel. We have five members of the Student Ambassadors group, and since we are here for the students, ultimately, we want to make sure we give them an opportunity to have their questions answered as well. It's also good for them to stand in front of a crowd and have to present their question publicly. I know they're all thrilled to be coming up here to do that. So, without further ado, I would like to... Well, let me introduce each of the candidates first. So, you should have picked up, hopefully, on the way in, and if you don't, you can get on the way out. There's a handout that has a little bio about each of the candidates. So, why don't you say your... Why don't you introduce yourselves briefly? Just real quickly, your name, and that way they can put a face to the name on the paper.
All right. I'll go first. I'm Josh Juckums.
Dan Wagenbach.
Renee Kaiser.
Brent Souter.
I'm Cody Beer.
Okay. So, there's your five candidates. I have also on the handout, in case you're wondering, when you go to vote, the ballot up in the top right-hand corner, that's what you'll see on the ballot. So, you'll know exactly what order their names are in and how it's going to look. But each of their bios includes some personal characteristics, the reasons they want to be on the school board, and then why voters should elect them. We are streaming this tonight online. It will also be available for as a recording if anybody misses it, and that link is on our website. You can either find it on the news section on the front page of the district website, or you can click on the Board of Education link, and you'll find a link to the video and the bios right there so people can access that information if they couldn't be here this evening, or if you want to go back and review anything. So, without further ado, I'm going to invite our Student Ambassadors to come ask their questions. So, I'll start off with Nora. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Nora Bidel. My question actually relates to us as the students. Student ambassadors are all about giving a voice to the students. What role do you see students having in decision-making within the school, and how do you plan to ensure that we continue to have a voice? Thank you.
I go first? Oh, man. That's why this seat wasn't taken. Should have locked up sooner. Well, I think it depends, you know, and so, like, I have little kids, and so, my kids are in kindergarten and first grade, and I don't think that they probably should have much input, you know? And so, it depends. But, man, certainly, upperclassmen and even probably freshmen and sophomores, you know, they should, I guess, should have some input. I suppose the board has the final say, and I don't know if there are mechanics in place for that currently, but hopefully, we can remain, if elected. I hope I can be accessible, you know, to students and maybe get to know some, certainly as my kids get older, anyway. And you guys would feel comfortable approaching any one of us, or, you know, a teacher or Shawn, to come and talk to us. Or, I don't know, that you guys could probably come to meetings, too, if you want to feel strongly about something, and I would think, or certainly, I would be... I would take it very seriously if, you know, a 16- or 17-year-old took time out of whatever night of the week to come to a board meeting. You know, kids aren't doing that a whole lot. So, if you've got something you're really concerned about, then I would certainly take that seriously.
Yeah, I certainly think it is important that you students have a voice, because why are we doing this? We're doing this for you. This isn't about us, it's about you guys. So, I think it's important that you would have a voice. Now, is that voice always going to be heard and followed through with? No, probably not. But for you to be able to speak and voice your opinion, I think, is very important. And I remember when I was in high school, I had the same opportunity, and I feel it should continue as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Students should have a voice, and I was really excited when Mrs. Weitzel started the ambassador program a couple of years ago, because I'd been to a board conference in Chicago and had gone to a session about it, and was really, you know, wanting our school to have something like that. So, and she got it going right after that, honestly. So, I know there's other avenues, both just talking, you know, informally to teachers and administrators, and then they also send out surveys now and then to students. So, you can voice your concerns or your opinions that way as well. So, I hope that we can keep doing things to make sure that your voices are heard and that we're meeting your needs.
I'll echo some of the same sentiments, but, you know, one of the starting points is the relationship that you guys have as students with your teachers. I've been impressed with the examples that I see of teachers who care about you and are communicating with you, and as you communicate with them, that's a great start. But certainly, we as board members, like has been mentioned, our role here is to serve the community at large, and you're a key piece of the community now, and as future community members that are going to be contributing in very big ways. So, yeah, absolutely. Keep those lines of communication open with your teachers, with us, and at the end of the day, the board has the responsibility to make decisions, but we can all learn from each other. So, hopefully, we can do that.
And kind of to tag off of what Brent was saying, I mean, I'm not originally from Tremont. I grew up in a town in... I grew up in Phoenix, Arizona. I went to a high school that had more enrollment than the population of this town. So, my graduating class was 535 kids. There was 2,500 kids in my school. And growing up in a large district like that, you feel kind of distant. I didn't have the... I didn't feel as close to my teachers. We didn't have that voice. And then, living in Tremont for the last 14 years and serving on the Tremont Education Foundation, I've been able to be involved in some meetings and see how students are working with teachers to come up with grants and scholarship ideas. On that foundation, we allocate the funds for the grants for the school. We allocate the funds for the scholarships for the students. It's been a good opportunity to hear what students are interested in, what they're working on, and just to be able to do that as a board member would be awesome. I'm involved with the Education Foundation and able to do that kind of on the periphery, just with funds, but being part of the school board, to have you guys come, like Josh was saying, come to a meeting so we can hear you out, I think that would be amazing. So, the smaller district like Tremont is so close-knit that it just gives... I feel like students have a better opportunity to have more of a voice, something that I didn't have when I was in high school. So, I want to... I embrace that. I want to encourage that for you guys.
I won't introduce each one, but I will say that we will not make Josh go first every time. So, we'll rotate it, so the next question Dan can answer first, and then we'll just go down the line. So, come on up, Izzy.
Hi, I'm Izzy Wagenbach, and my question is, what is one thing you would change about the school district and why?
Big on change, myself, but, you know, I really can't think of too much that I'd like to change. I love this... I love this community, this school, the way it is. It isn't much different from when I was in high school. It's a good atmosphere. There's good teachers and staff, and I'm just really thankful to have a community like this and a school like this to be a part of. I probably am more in preserving rather than changing. Certainly want to preserve what we have and have it there, not only for you guys now, but for also my grandkids as well.
So, a year ago, what I would have said is that we would have more funds to be able to pay teachers better and to have more options for the school, and we put that on the ballot a year ago, and this community said yes. And so, the change that... Some of the changes that we wanted to see for years are now going to become a reality. And so, that's what I thought of as far as what I would change, is just being able to offer more options and better pay and more opportunities.
I think, as far as change goes, you know, I tend to think along the same lines as Dan. I'm appreciative for where we're at as a community, but we can always incrementally change, like small change in small ways to take something that's good and make it a little bit better. So, you know, even more of a broad array of educational opportunities, not just focused in one area, like for students who are going to college, or not just focused on maybe those who are interested in ag. Both of those are great things, and we've made a lot of progress since I've been in school in offering offerings for those who are looking to go to college and getting a head start on that. And in the same breath, we've made a lot of progress in offering great vocational-type education, agricultural education that wasn't around when I was here at school 20-some years ago. So, we've been making incremental changes. We can continue to do that in small ways and see this district continue to improve.
Yeah, I echo that, Brent. I mean, that's all... The small changes are good. Big changes are good, too. And kind of what Renee was saying, that referendum was so big, just with funds for the school. I mean, the community supporting that was amazing. That's allowing so many upgrades to facilities, like the big white roof on the elementary schools coming off. Just things like that, just to make Tremont look real good. The education here is phenomenal. There's not much that I would actually want to change in what the students are learning. I mean, as a district, the operating expense per pupil for students in Tremont is one of the lowest in the state, however, the outcomes for these students are some of the highest. So, we're spending less money on students, and they're succeeding. Like, Tremont High School got voted exemplary, which is top 10% in the state of Illinois, in Tremont, Illinois. And that is amazing, just a testament to how well the school's run right now. So, change in the school, right now, Tremont is very well-run, and the referendum is bringing some much-needed change. Facility upgrades, teachers need paid more. I'll support that. Teachers are very well... Very underpaid, and they need to be paid more. I mean, they're raising our future. So, the referendum is hopefully going to allow for that, and that's where I stand.
So, one of the motivating forces for me being interested in running for school board, and like I say, I've got little kids, and so, this isn't hyper-relevant to me now, but I've got pretty strong feelings about cellphones in school, and my understanding is that in the last 12 months, that there's been some change to policy and some restrictions about that. But that's something I feel strongly about, and, you know, I don't know if it's realistic or if there's public appetite to get, you know, cellphones completely out of school, but, you know, to whatever degree I can limit that, I'm interested in doing that. I've, you know, several acquaintances, friends, who have had kids exposed to pornography at school or on the bus, and, you know, I'm a little bit aware... I've read some of Jonathan Haidt's work about the effect of social media on girls, and that's a concern for me. And, you know, to a degree, we live in the world we live in, and, you know, we can't... We can't turn back time, but we can keep stuff like that out of schools, or we can try to, anyway.
My name is Lillian Couch. My question is, how would you address the need of students to ensure all students feel safe, seen, and supported at school?
That's a great question. In the last year or two, we have really beefed up our counseling staff. We were kind of bare-bones for a while, partially because of financial straits, and partially they're hard to find. And so, coming out of COVID, students were... I mean, before COVID, they were also, you know, had problems, but coming out of COVID was, students needed support. They needed more support than ever. Social media, all of that combined. And so, I think we have a, like, a joint task force of, like, students and staff that work on emotional, social-emotional learning and health, and we're always looking for ways to improve on that, because it is not easy being a teenager today. Never has been, but it's harder than ever. So, I am fully in support of whatever we can put in place to help our students feel safe and feel heard and seen. Thank you.
Josh already referenced a book that I've had a chance to start reading, talking about the importance of real and physical reality. It's one of the pieces of this book, and it talks about the challenges of just mental health issues among youth, depression, anxiety. So, as Renee's already said, the need for us to be attentive and to be concerned about the challenges that you as students are facing is really real. It's something we need to really make a priority to be attentive to and to look for ways in which we can address them, whether that's through additional programming, some of the great work that teachers are already doing, but it's something we certainly need to make an effort to prioritize.
Yeah, I agree with all that. I mean, the high school age is a rough time, just developmentally, mentally, there's a lot of anxiety. Being in the medical field, I see patients come in to me on a daily basis with mental health needs, anxiety, depression, stress, and a lot of times, I don't want to just throw a pill at them. I want to get to the root of it and be like, okay, what's going on? So, I get an opportunity to talk to these kids, a lot of them being teenagers in high school, and just get to hear their stories, and it just blows my mind sometimes, just how hard it... Even from when I graduated, how the difference it is now, what these kids are having to put up with. But I think Tremont is doing a good job. They, like Renee said, they have the counseling. They have the resource officer now here in school, so we have somewhat of a police presence in the district, and I think that promotes a feeling of more security, too. So, there's the mental aspect, making kids feel welcome, making them feel heard, but also making them feel physically safe. I mean, if you guys watch the news, we live in scary times. So, having a resource officer is an important thing here as well, to essentially bump up security in the school as well.
Yeah, it's a hard thing, and it's a big job. And so, I think, in my mind, or at least looking back on my experience in high school, it's got to be... And it certainly felt like it to me when I was in school, that it's got to be kind of in the water and in the culture, you know, because there's only so much budget for... And it's great to hear that they've beefed up some of the counseling services. But when I was in school, you know, I was connected with teachers. You know, I had teachers that I was close to and coaches, and so, I hope that that's... You know, I don't know, you know, how much influence the board has that way, but I would hope that being supportive of students that are, you know, experiencing some kind of mental health problem or crisis or anxiety, or all the normal stuff that people feel when they're teenagers, that they've got a... We've got a strong culture among all the staff, the teachers and the counselors and the principals of, you know, of having open doors for students to come and talk, and, you know. No, one person or one program can't. You know, there's too many of you.
Yeah, I think it's important to have those programs, and I'm glad, as Renee said, that Tremont does have some of those programs. I hope in the future that it could be even more, because those of us who have kids, we know sometimes it's not as easy for them to talk to their parents. Sometimes they need another avenue for somebody to talk to and confide in in order to find that help they need. I know some of us, when we were growing up, it was kind of a thing, well, you're too tough for that, or that wasn't evident in our day, but I think it was, just we didn't have the resources like they do today, and I'm glad they do here in Tremont, and certainly support that.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Kincaid, and my question for you today is, what role, if any, should our schools play in supporting social, emotional, and learning roles for our students?
Maybe some overlap and some of the comments that have already been made. Again, I go back to some of these ideas that I've been thinking about lately in terms of the importance of just the emotional state of young people. And, you know, in the time we live in, it is increasingly tempting to resort to virtual spaces to socialize, and what a great opportunity we have here in school, in a public school with a lot of students, to sort of work out and try out socializing face-to-face with other students. With that, though, comes some risks, right, of hurt and pain and struggling through challenges. So, we need to be able to support you as a school in that and provide resources, some of which have already been talked about, so.
Yeah, it's back to the emotional support and mental health in general. If you're struggling, speak up. Silence is going to be what's going to harm you. And as a board member, I want to be transparent and listen. Come to the board meetings. Speak to your teachers. When I was in college, we had... They had an open-door policy. So, when you were out of class and your professors were in their office, their office door was open, and if you needed to talk about whatever, and you could go in there and talk to your professor. And I think Tremont, I believe, being a smaller district, like I said earlier, is just... It's so valuable that you can build these relationships. You don't go... When I grew up, I grew up and went to five different schools by the time I graduated high school. So, you meet some teachers, and boom, they kick you off to the next school. And here, my kindergartner is going to grow up and maybe move two blocks down the road and get to see her kindergarten teacher in the hallways, in passing, and at school events all the way through high school. It's an amazing opportunity for these kids and the opportunity they have in this small district to develop these relationships, and the relationships are key when it comes to mental health and emotional health. You guys, speak your minds, be open. If you're struggling, tell somebody. Speak to your teachers, speak to your friends, come to the board meetings. We'll be there to support you.
Yeah, I think, I guess, not to repeat everything that I said for the last question, but it's... Emotional health of students or students feeling support is... It's a heavy burden, and it's got to be carried by everybody, and so, like I say, I hope it can be in the water with the teachers, because, you know, as good as programs are and as good as having counselors and people on staff to do specifically that, you know, you can only do so much of that, you know? If everyone's not willing, all the staff aren't willing to be a part of the solution, you know? The primary job of the board and the primary, you know, use of the preponderance of our funding should be, you know, toward education, and, you know, there's only so much money to go around, and so, hopefully, emotionally supporting the students is something that we can all be a part of. Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely think it's important for the students to have a good relationship with not only their teachers, but really all the staff to have that opportunity to, if they have a problem, if they have an emotional problem or even just a social problem, that he can have somebody to talk to. I mean, I recall when I was in high school, able to talk to Mr. Workman and how he helped me through a lot of things, and I really appreciate it, and taught me a lot for today even, that I still use in my relationships. And a big part of relationships is communication. Your teachers don't know if you have a problem if you don't talk to them, and I'm probably 100% sure that most of them would make... Take the time to get to know you and talk to you.
Yeah, I don't have much to add to what I said before, but for the record, I thought the comments about the cellphone, we have changed our policies this year and possibly could even tighten that up next year. I don't know how students feel about that, but I have yet to talk to a parent who is not supportive of that idea. And I think students, there's not that many of you here, but if you were honest, you know, going without your cellphone for a while, it actually feels kind of good, and you're actually talking to each other instead of looking at your phones, and that just really helps with emotional well-being, I think. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Johnson, and my question is, education and school policies can be controversial. What skills do you have for constructive responses to controversy?
Thanks, Kaylee. The Board of Education, it's a hierarchy. Their job is to hire or fire the superintendent. Shawn, you're awesome. And to implement school policy. If there is an issue, it needs to start at the source. So, if a student has an issue, it starts with the teacher. If a parent has an issue, it starts with the teacher. There's a hierarchy here. So, if the teacher and the student or the parent can't resolve it, then that goes to the principal. If the principal can't resolve it, it goes to the superintendent, and ultimately, if it's an unresolved then, it meets the board, comes to the board's table. And, you know, there are seven members of the board. Any type of policy needs to be passed by majority vote. I feel like I have good communication skills. Being a healthcare provider, with Dr. Sumer coming off of the board, I feel like it's important to have another healthcare provider on the board for a healthcare issue, maybe another pandemic, to have that level of expertise to help make decisions, because a lot of decisions made during the past pandemic were obviously controversial, right? It was good to have Dr. Sumer on the board to give that medical expertise. So, I have a strength there to provide, and if any healthcare issue were to arise, but just open communication. If an issue is brought to the board, obviously, we would all discuss it and come to a conclusion, take a vote, and the majority would rule on that. But every issue would be taken seriously, but like I said, it should follow that hierarchy there, the structure of the school system.
Not a lot to add to that. I guess if controversial issues arise in the board meeting, then my platform will be to vote my conscience, and I don't... I don't think it'd be right... It wouldn't be, you know, good service to the public to let, you know, an issue maybe being touchy or controversial, let that motivate me to vote or advocate for something that'd be a violation of conscience for me.
Yeah, certainly, as a board, I mean, we have to work together, and not only in the whole school. Everybody's got to be doing their part. If there's nothing I've learned in the last 30 years running, helping run our business, is that you have to learn to work with. is that you have to learn to work with people. I remember my dad saying time after time, um, you gotta learn to work with these guys. Because in my line of work, sometimes we don't get, uh, most motivated people, and you gotta learn to work with them. And you learn patience, and you learn how to teach them. And I think that's very important on this board, especially when there's controversial stuff that does come up. And as far as my conscience, I would probably always lean on the biblical principles that my life is founded on.
Yeah. Do controversial things come up? Sometimes we have controversy, but we've always gotten along, we've always been respectful of each other, and sometimes we don't all vote the same, and that's okay. The majority takes, you know, takes it. And by far, the most things we talk about are not controversial. Most of the time, it's the budget. Money, money, money. But, um, but yeah, there's sometimes controversy, and we work together, and we respect each other. And that's, that's how we do it here in the public school. And, um, there's all different kinds of people, and we find a way to work together to make the school the best it can be.
Before I forget, if I don't have a chance to thank you for coming, students, thank you for coming and sharing. It's great to, to see your involvement here. As far as controversy, you know, Renee touched on respect, and I think that's, that's the key to working through issues, right? It's just, first and foremost, having a mutual respect for the people that you're, you're working through an issue with, even if you don't see exactly the same. Differences of opinion are good, it's how we learn and strengthen our viewpoint and, and maybe change and get to the right answer on something. As is in my bio, I'm in a, I'm in the accounting and finance world, and so I, at work, I work with different departments and, and different people throughout our company. We all have sort of different perspectives and come at problems from a little different angle, but we respect each other. We have that foundation of mutual respect. From what I've seen of the board attending meetings, it's a group that's highly competent, respects each other, and, uh, and, and tries to work together despite their, their different viewpoints from time to time on things. And, um, I think that's a great characteristic of our board. If I were to join it, uh, it'd be a, a piece of, of that experience that I would look forward to, so.
Okay, thank you very much to our Student Ambassadors Group for leading us off tonight with the first round of questions. From this point now, I'm going to introduce our moderator for the evening. Tim Barrow has been the voice of the Minutemen, or Minutemen, see, I'm still, I came, I came, all right, let me fix that. I came from Lexington, and we had a guy whose name was Tim, who was the voice of the Minutemen. So I, I do this all the time. So he's been the voice of the Turks for nine years. He has, um, been the P A announcer at football games. I can hear him at my house during, when, when he's doing, uh, games out there. Um, he's also done basketball games for us as well. Uh, he is good with a microphone, he's, um, good with people, he's been a strong supporter of the district for years, his kids came through the district, um, he, he was on T, the T E F board as well. So he's very familiar with how the district operates and all the things that go along with it. So we thought he'd be a great moderator this evening. We are going to try to get to all the questions that were, uh, submitted, but there are a lot. So we've tried to combine some that kind of cover the same topics. If we don't get to your question specifically, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna stop at eight thirty, regardless of where we're at. At eight thirty, if your question hasn't been asked, the, the candidates will still be around, they'll hang out afterwards, you can have more of an informal chat with them if you'd like, to get the answers that you want. But if we were going to ask every single question that's back there, we might be here till midnight. So we want to make sure we keep it moving, and Tim's going to try his best to keep it moving, and I would encourage the candidates as well to try to keep it concise and keep it moving. So I'd like to introduce Tim Barrow, the voice of the Turks.
It's okay, Sean, growing up at Metamora, I was always a red bird, so it's not a problem. All right, um, so yes, I'm Tim Barrow, I am married to Anne Stuber Barrow, so Ken and Pauline Stuber's daughter. So nice to be here with you this evening, uh, and I'm going to jump into the questions, okay? We'll start Josh, and I'll kind of, we've got some questions that will be specific for a candidate, and others, most of these are all candidates, so just to let you know. So we're going to start off with the first one, and it's a round topic of faculty and staff. So what is your plan to attract and retain high-quality teachers? Josh?
I don't, I don't know if I have one. Um, we, it seems like we've had good talent in the past, we had good teachers when I went through, and, um, so what they're doing seems to be working.
Okay, Dan?
Um, I think faculty and staff is obviously the most important thing, especially, like in my line of work, if we don't have employees, we don't have a business, so, um, I think it's important. We have to be competitive in, in wages and benefits and, um, and have a good working atmosphere. I think that's very important. I know around our place, sometimes that's what causes people to leave, is not have a good atmosphere to work in. So to, to focus on those things, uh, for me is, is very important.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo what Dan said, uh, trying to be competitive with wages and benefits is going to be key. Um, there's, the years that I've been on the board, we used to, you know, the early years, we used to get a stack of resumes for a position, especially for Tremont. I mean, people wanted to come here and teach. They still do, but there is a teacher shortage, um, quite, quite a, a dire one. So there's not sometimes maybe five for a position, maybe three, depending on the, the type of position it is. So being competitive is going to be key. And, and now we have some extra funds to work with, which is, we're so grateful for that. Thank you.
And when you think about the things that, that are attractive to, to any employee in any, any line of work, right, it's already been touched on, the environment is key. One thing about a school district is there's always a community behind it, right? And I think Tremont as a community does a great job of having, you know, supportive parents, uh, communicative, communicative parents, parents that feel like they can be on the same side as teachers, pulling for the same things, uh, so that's important. But those sort of intangible things, they only go so far, right? At the end of the day, we want our teachers to, to have a, uh, the view of a career that they can have, a fulfilling career. And, and a lot of that comes down to, to their paycheck. And as has been mentioned, um, hopefully we have some, some extra wiggle room and funds to, to get the budget where it needs to be to, to provide financially for our teachers, so.
Yeah, the wages are, are a huge thing. I mean, we gotta have competitive pay for these teachers. Tremont is a very sought-after town, as you know, I moved from Scottsdale, Arizona to God's country. I love this place. So, I mean, Tremont, like, like Renee was saying, there's the, there's a, um, there's a teacher shortage, and that's, that's killing the staffing, uh, as she was saying about the applications, there's less and less applications, as you know, or may, may know that the, we had, Tremont had so much trouble getting a, a Spanish teacher, and in a couple of years, that's going to be a requirement for all these students, is to have some years of, uh, foreign language. But if you don't have any teacher, how are you going to teach these kids foreign language? So there's other, there's things that are in the works, so being part of the Tremont Education Foundation, I've actually been the president of that foundation for the last three years, uh, still serving in that role. Uh, we, we supply grants. So we, first off, getting the teachers here with the pay, uh, and like Renee also said, that people want to come to Tremont, a house goes to sale, boom, it's sold. Tremont is a sought-after place in the, in the, in the region. So getting the, getting the teachers to Tremont is important. And then providing them with the resources they need. So on the Tremont Education Foundation, like I said earlier, we allocate the funds for some of the grants. So, uh, these teachers have ideas of what they want to implement in their classrooms, they present it to us as a board, we vote, and, uh, I don't know that we've ever, I'm not sure that we've ever, at least in the last five years that I've been on the board, actually declined a, a grant that a teacher, we, we're lucky enough to have funds to, um, provide these teachers with the resources they want to do. So, uh, yeah, getting them here and then giving them the resources to develop a good curriculum and teach these kids, it's just very important.
Great, thank you. Okay, this next question is for all of you, except for Renee, but I got a follow-up question for you, Renee. So, um, how many school board meetings have you attended in the past six months? And what are the pros and/or cons do you see in the current board? And Dan, I'll start with you. So how many school board meetings have you attended and pros and/or cons that you see in the current board?
I'd say the last six months I've attended, well, ever since I decided to run, I've been attended. Before that, I'm ashamed to say I was only at one. But what I've witnessed and is how well the board works together. Did they always agree? No. But they have always been respectful to each other and have worked together, and I really appreciated that. And I think, you know, for our community, we should be very thankful for the board that we do have, and also for all of us that are running. I think any combination of the three of us up here would be a win for our community and for our district.
Very good. Brent?
Um, I'm trying to do math up here on stage under pressure as an accountant, it seems kind of, but, uh, I consider, I was considering starting to run at the beginning of, of the 2024 school year, and so, uh, I've attended meetings since September, I guess, so I think that's six board meetings, basically. And what I've noticed, I guess, from, from witnessing the board in action is, uh, I mean, I'm impressed, I'm impressed with, with sort of the professionalism and the respect that they show each other, but I've also noticed the, the diversity of, of viewpoint and, and opinion, and there's diverse skills and diverse, um, you know, professional backgrounds, and that seems to, to work well, right? Cody mentioned the importance of, you know, having, having a medical voice on the board, and there, there's, there's a lot of different backgrounds represented, and, uh, that's been impressive to see in action.
Yeah, I believe I've been to, um, at least five, maybe six of the last meetings, and just echoing what they said, I mean, the board works, the, the current board works very well together. Um, I mean, we're sad to be losing Todd Kilgus and Dr. Sumer, they've been just complete awesome assets to the board, and thank you guys to your many years of service. So, uh, and then just being in the, in those meetings, like they were saying, they all work together, there's been some contention, contentious moments, um, and there's been some disagreements. That's why there's a board, okay? It's not one person making a decision for the whole school system, the whole district. There's seven, so it's majority. And there is going to be, um, issues that some of us don't agree on, um, and again, the majority rules, so, uh, but in, in the whole process, they've been completely professional. It's just been a, it's been a good experience to learn that. And then working with Dr. Sumer myself, I mean, he was president of the board for many, many years, um, and just talking with him over the past few years of kind of, what do you do, what's involved, uh, he's been kind of a good mentor to me, uh, in the whole process.
Okay, thank you. And Renee, this one's for you. You've been on the school board for many years. List three major, two or three major things you have accomplished so far, and why are you running for reelection now?
Accomplished personally, myself, or as a board? I hope you mean as a board.
I would, I would think accomplished as, as a board, rather than yourself, because you are working as a board.
Cause I, I'm just part of the board.
It's a, it's a part of a board.
Right, right.
Yes.
Um, okay. I tell you, the, the down, the economic downturn of 2008 was, was terrible for the board, and that we felt that repercussion for years. And so one major thing, of course, was last year's referendum. That was like a huge sigh of relief for us, um, that we could finally, you know, finally have some funds to work with for some things that we had been wanting to do for a long time. Um, let's see, uh, one other major thing, I guess I would say just getting through COVID without losing our minds. It was so hard. Um, you talk about controversy, there was a lot of controversy around how we were handling things, um, we were doing the best that we could. That dovetailed with, um, a, a really bad financial year for us. Um, so I, I worried for Sean's health on the daily. Uh, he was under so much pressure, we all were. So we got through it, uh, we had the least amount of learning loss, I think, possible, uh, because we chose to go back to school, have the students come back to school. Of course, it was optional, they could still learn at home if they wanted to, but most of them came back, um, even though they had to wear masks. And that was, that was key, that was huge, because the schools that did that next year from home, the learning loss was, they probably still aren't caught up from that. So, um, I, I was, I was just really grateful to get through that and get back to kind of normal school again. Why am I still, why am I running again? It's, it's kind of in the bio, but, uh, I think it's important to have a woman on the board, and I think it's important to have experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this will be a question for all of you. When was the last time you reviewed Tremont's District 702 ISBE? I believe that's the Illinois State Board of Education report card. When was the last time you reviewed it, and did anything stand out to you on that report card? Brent, I'm going to hit you up first on this one.
Um, great question.
Glad you're answering it.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if this is the ISBE report card, but I have been playing around on the, I think it's called the illinoisreportcard.com website, I don't know. The website that has report cards for like every district and every school, and you can break it down by like school building. Uh, and it has been interesting, cause you can like, if I'm, if this is completely not the right thing I'm talking about, that's perfectly fine, but I'll go, I'll go ahead and keep talking. You can like compare multiple schools, right? So you can say, start with Tremont, and then add, you know, six or seven or eight schools to compare against, and then you can look at things like, um, SAT scores and, um, you know, the rate of students who are going on to, uh, secondary education, and, um, you know, there's financial metrics, teacher salary metrics. Something that stood out from that, I, I don't know that I have any huge takeaways other than, um, as I sort of played around and compared other schools within our conference, you know, the Eureka's, El Paso Gridley, Hayworth, um, our stats seem to stack up really well. I can't, I can't rattle off any specific statistics, but the, the, you know, they're good visual representations on that website, I'd encourage any of you to go, go play around with that. And I think you'll see that, that we're really competitive with similar-sized schools in the district, or within our conference and in our area. And even as you go and compare us to like a Pekin or a Morton, um, I, I think we stack up well.
Okay, thank you. Cody?
Uh, last time I looked at it was yesterday. Um, I, uh, I have some stat here that just stood out to me, and what Brent said, it's a great website, you should all go on and look and see how well Tremont is actually doing. Like I said, I come from a very large school system. There were five high schools with twenty-five-hundred kids each in my district, so that's over ten thousand kids, just high school, that doesn't include middle schools and elementary schools. So, um, Tremont is awesome. Listen to this. So we have O E P, O E P P, operating expense per pupil, and I kind of touched on this earlier. Tremont- Tremont in 20, the 2024 rankings are not out yet, but 2023 is out. Tremont spent $11,870 per pupil. The Illinois spent over 18, the average school in Illinois spent over 18,000 per pupil. So, Tremont is spending much less on their students per pupil. That's not a bad thing, though. That means we're good at budgeting and we have fiscal responsibility and conservatism. That's amazing. The opposite end of that, what I touched on earlier, is that our outcomes are awesome. So, like I said earlier, Tremont High School was voted exemplary, top 10% in the state of Illinois. Awesome. Great school, middle school got commendable, which is also very good. Just to give you an idea on that O E P P, the operating expense per pupil, where we rank in the state, we are the, out of 852 schools, we are 753, lowest, which is a good, good thing. And if you get a better picture of that, to give unit districts, so a unit district is a district that offers grades kindergarten through 12, okay? There's 394 unit districts in Illinois. We are 333. So, that just shows you the budgeting, the fiscal responsibility. It's amazing. Tremont is amazing, and I, I hope to continue that.
Thank you. Josh?
I've never looked at it, but it sounds like a cool tool. I'll, I'll check it out.
The last time I looked at it was probably '21. That was my last son graduated. But just from going to the last few board meetings, probably for the last six months, and I, they've talked about it many times, I think almost every board meeting, they talk about it. But it's just to see how, I mean, back then Tremont wasn't bad, you know, Tremont was excellent then, and how they have stayed there and maybe even went up since then.
Very good. Thank you. Cody, you'll be on this next question first. Given the uncertain future of federal education funding, how will you ensure that 702 provides its students and teachers with necessary resources and educational experiences?
So, I already touched on that a little bit. I do that as the president of Tremont Education Foundation. Like I said, we allocate the funds for scholarships for students. I get to read all the essays, every essay that's submitted for the scholarship, we read through, we grade them, we vote on who, who gets to, who wins the scholarship essentially. So, I've been involved in that way. Again, what we talked about earlier, the referendum was huge. If something like that were ever have to be passed again, I mean, that may, that might come in the future, and it's kind of hard to discuss future issues because we don't know, we don't know what tomorrow holds, right? We have to live in today. It's good to be prepared for tomorrow. So, like I said, the, the, the school is fiscally responsible, and I think, I think they're doing a really good job of that right now. So, it's just providing what I, like I said, I already helped with the Tremont Education Foundation, and that's how I provide those for the, provide the funds for that grants for school.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I think that Cody answered the question in his, in his answer to the previous question. I mean, if, if, whatever, if we lose federal funding, presumably everybody else does too, and it sounds like we're positioned really, really well to weather that better than most. And so, so it sounds like the board and Sean are doing, are doing a great job. So, whatever secret sauce we got working with right now, it's, we'll just keep on kind of doing that.
Dan?
I don't know, the future's hard to know, but if something like that would happen and our federal funding would be cut, I think, for me, I look at our community and the way we work together and the way we help each other out. I think if we can lean on our community for some of that funding would be, and I know all of us would be willing, I know none of us like to pay higher taxes, but I think all of us are willing to give more to the school. I think that'd be one way to shore that up.
Very good. Renee?
Yeah, I mean, I've mentioned a few times the referendum and what a, what a change, a good change that's been and will be in the years ahead. So, I'm going to brag on Sean a little bit. He is an absolute wizard with the budget. He makes our job pretty easy. He comes, puts a spreadsheet up there, explains everything, here's where we are, here's where we were last year, and we're just like, great, you know? So, of course, we throw out ideas and discuss things, but your, your community and your children are in good hands.
And Brent?
Renee, you stole my thunder with the commendation of Sean, but I have been impressed too with, with Sean's obvious grasp of the financials. So, that's, that's a huge comfort, I guess, as, as you think about the bedrock and the foundation of operating any entity, whether it's a business or a, or a school, right? You got to have a firm grasp of the fundamentals financially. I think everybody else has spoken to the need to replace federal funds with, with other sources of revenue. Where's that come from? Well, local sources or state sources, and our state's pretty, pretty uncertain as well, right? It's a, it's a difficult time for the state. So, thankful for the referendum and thankful for a community that supports our school.
Okay, thank you. Next one question is for all of you. Josh, I'll give this one to you first. Will you be able to stand up and voice your opinion if it differs from the rest of the board?
Yes. Yeah. And I, I really do, that, I think that that is a, a personal strong suit of mine, you know, you don't obviously all know me, me personally, but I'm not bashful at all about, about sharing my opinion. And, and I, you know, I don't want to, my plan for getting on the board isn't, you know, to get in and, you know, knock skulls and, and, you know, take ground and whatever else. But, but if I've got a strong opinion about something, I make it known and, and, yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay. Yes, most definitely. I had an opportunity to serve on Apostolic Christian Restmore Board for six years from 2017 to 23, so right through the heart of COVID. And just like it was very hard here for the school, it was really very hard for the nursing home as well. And many times I voiced my opinion there. But also, I just kind of took it a step farther. Rather than just voice my opinion on some of the regulations that were going on and the hurt was going on with our residents at that time, I also took the time to call the state. I probably spent 50 hours on the phone to different state agencies, talking to them, advocating for the residents, and I'm willing to do that for this community as well and for our students as well.
Thank you. Renee?
Yes, I'm willing to stand up and speak my mind.
Very good. Brent?
Yeah, likewise, I am as well. I'll just draw on my experience. I work in a small business, a small company with a handful of employees that work together. Strong personalities are in the room, and so I think I can draw on that experience of, of having to stand up and, and hold my own in that sort of environment and draw on that experience if I need to on the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would voice my opinion as well, and just on personal experience. When I was a nurse at the hospital, you know, being a male nurse is more of a rarity. And you can get stomped on by other healthcare providers, and I wasn't afraid to, like, if there was something that was going on that I didn't agree with, I wasn't afraid to talk to a doctor and say, hey, listen, this is going on, I think we should do this. You got to be able to present the problems, present solutions, and I think I'd be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. This next question is around curriculum, and Dan, you'll be the first one to answer. How would you approach parents who have concerns about controversial curricular topics?
First of all, I think it's pretty evident that we have a Christian community, and many of us, if not all of us, are abdipical principles. And I think that's one of the most important things to have also in our school. And so, when it comes to curriculum, that's, that's where I'd rely on. First of all, does it align with the Bible and what we should be teaching our kids? And that's, to me, that's how I'd approach it.
Okay, thank you. Renee?
Well, Cody referenced this earlier, that if a parent has a concern about a curriculum, a curricular topic, they go to the teacher first. And then if they can't work it out, they go to the principal. If they can't work it out, they go to the superintendent. If they're not satisfied with that, they come, they can approach a board member or the board in general. So, I encourage parents to follow that, that line. We're happy to, to hear concerns. We have several times, and we're happy to make adjustments if we feel like that's, you know, a legitimate concern.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just reiterate what Renee explained as far as that, that process. I will point out too, I mean, I've noticed as a parent in the district, many teachers are already very proactive in reaching out to parents via email with, hey, here is something we're going to be covering, here's a film we're going to be watching, here's a book we're going to be reading. So, I feel like teachers already do a really good job of trying to open up that communication and, and have that, that sort of dialogue with parents already and provide those opportunities. So, take advantage of that. I think from my experience, our teachers are, are open to hearing concerns and, and already try to, to reach out and establish that, that open communication from the start.
Yeah, and like Renee said, and like I said earlier, the hierarchy, the structure of the, of the school district going from level to level and ultimately reaching the board if the problem's not resolved. And I echo what Dan said, is we live in, this is such a conservative community, and my alliance, my, my, my values align very conservative, biblically based. I mean, listening to some of these kids graduate high school and they're quoting the Bible up here, I never had that in high school. There was no Bible in my school. And we're going to be offering Lifewise Academy for these kids to be learning about Jesus our Lord. I mean, it's just amazing, the opportunities that Tremont has. I went to this district that had an enormous amount of funds and didn't, I feel like I had zero opportunity. So, Tremont's doing a really good job. If there's an issue, use that hierarchy. Start at the teacher, move your way up. The board will be there at the end waiting for you if you need to.
Thank you, Cody. Renee, this question is for you first. Please speak to the standards-based grading system. What are the pros and cons in your opinion?
Did Josh get a chance to talk on that?
Oh, Josh, did I miss you?
You skipped me.
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
That's fine, I, I didn't have a lot to add. I, 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 I'm with Dan and Cody. I'd vote my conscience. I'm a believer too, and, and, you know, and so that's, that's, that's the deal. That's what you get. Vote for me, you get my conscience on, on issues of, you know, whatever, I guess, moral issues or controversial issues that have a moral valence.
Dan, thank you for stopping the bus. Appreciate it. I look at the clock, I try to get through all these questions, so I apologize. My apologies, Josh.
No problem.
Renee, please speak to the standards-based grading system. What are pros and cons in your opinion?
Okay. So, it's been a few years since we've implemented standards-based grading, and it's kind of been a gradual process. Not all buildings did it at the same time, not all grades did it at the same time. Personally, I wasn't like 100% behind it. I, I was open to the idea, and we, we heard a lot of the, the pros of it. Basically, they're, they're grading the students on a lot of different areas instead of just saying, you have an A in this class or you have a B in this class. So, the standards-based grading is great, it's giving them numbers on different standards that then add up or average into a number, which you can, it's kind of equivalent to a grade. A four is kind of equivalent to an A plus. So, yes, I, I know parents have different thoughts and, and feelings about it, and so do we as a board, and it's been a work in progress, honestly. It looks a little different than when we started it because we've made adjustments based on what people have said, based on how kids have responded to it. So, I think the idea of it and the, the general rule of it is, is good because you're, you're giving that student more chances to work on different areas of an assignment or a project, and then letting, and then also, you know, a chance to reassess if needed. So, I'm, I'm not like the biggest cheerleader in the world for it, but I see some of the benefits, and I'm okay with having it. If Sean came back tomorrow and said we're reverting back to A, B, C, D, F, I'd be like, okay, that's fine too, you know? I, I guess I don't have a hill that I'm going to die on either way.
Okay, thank you.
This is actually an area that I've, I've heard a fair amount of feedback from parents on, like when they hear that I'm running for the board, it's kind of like the topic that comes up. And I, I have, I'll be honest, I have a fair amount to learn about standards-based grading. One maybe thing that I've just picked up as I've seen my kids progress through, through the school system, we have a, just, it's in the, it's in the bio, but we have a daughter in high school, a daughter in the middle school, and two sons in the grade school. So, my wife and I have, have a kid in every, every building. And it seems maybe that it's, it's not so much about like switching back to a traditional grading system or, or being really enthusiastic about the standards-based grading, because there is a, like, one of the main benefits I see of it is kids have an opportunity to understand the content more than just like, hey, they walk in, they take a test, they fail it, and boom, you're moving on to the next set of topics. There is an opportunity to try to master the material, so that, that's a good thing. The con, I think in my mind, is where parents and students themselves are trying to understand what the numbers mean. And as they progress from grade school to middle school to high school, do those numbers still mean the same thing? Does the information they're receiving back translate into like, what does this actually mean for how well I'm learning things? So, maybe it's just a matter of, we need to do a better job of like educating families, educating parents of like, what are we trying to communicate with these numbers, with this report card? And that might go a long way in, in sort of alleviating some of the angst.
Yeah, I'm going to be honest, I'm not a fan of it. I grew up with the A, B, C, D, and F, and these kids, they're getting these one, two, threes, and it's very, very hard to get a four. And I worked my tail off to get A pluses in school, right? And these kids are having trouble getting fours, or maybe not, or three is essentially what, what they get. Fours sometimes involve extra credit, and then you can't get a four if extra credit's not offered, so three's the highest score you're going to get. But then there's a rude awakening when they leave school and they go to college and they're back to the A, B, C, D, F. So, if it would come to vote, I'd be voting back to the standard grading, and that's just my opinion on it.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I, I'm with Cody. I don't have a real strong opinion about it, and, and, you know, like I said earlier, we got little kids, and we're just kind of getting started in this thing. But, but, but what Cody said is true, and when I get assessments for our, our kids, you know, when we went through, we had, it wasn't just A, B, C, D, F, you had A and then A minus, then B plus, and then B, and then B minus, and then C plus. And so, you know, there were, there were all these, these in, in betweens, you know? And that's kind of where I was. I was kind of like a B plus type student, you know? But that was better than being a B student, you know? And, and, but if they were to cut all that out, that's what I would have been. I wouldn't have been an A student, I would have been a B student. And so, it's, you know, so, so the more, and of, of course, there's an upper limit to how many, you know, levels you can have, but, but, you know, maybe eight's better than four. And, 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 you know, tangentially, I've, I've had a conversation with a teacher who was not real impressed about it, and that's something that, that I'm, I'm maybe more interested in. and that's something that, that I'm, I'm maybe more interested in, um, if elected. Uh, is, is seeing what the teachers think about it, because they're the ones who interact with it every day and, and, and the retaking tests, you know, that, that are redoing assessments or whatever, I can see how that would be an opportunity to master the content. And also an opportunity to get familiar with the questions on the thing so you can get through it and not learn anything. You know, depending on what kind of kid you are. And um, a- a- and, and I'm not saying that that's what's happening or, or the other, but, but uh, you know, I'm, I'm curious what, what the teachers think and what, you know, kind of the boots-on-the-ground experience with, with using it is.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not real um, familiar with it. I don't think, they didn't have that when my kids were in there, so um, I couldn't give you much uh, negative or positive for it. But I know if it does create, um, if it's not something that doesn't um, create, um, hard work creates success, um, uh, probably wouldn't be for it. So I think if you put in the work and the grade, me myself, I do kind of like the A. But I really don't have a strong opinion either way.
Okay, thank you. All right, this next question, Cody, this one was directed to you and then we'll have a follow-up question for all. So Cody, um, as a healthcare professional, how would you address state and national mandates for health issues?
Very uh, loaded question and a tricky question. So uh, one of the biggest issues during COVID was masks, right? And it's like a, that's like a trigger word for people. Um, it is what it is, we learned. Um, COVID's still around, right? People are still catch, catching it. I'm not gonna discount the disease. I had many patients pass away from COVID. Uh, I had many patients do very well, it was a wide spectrum. Um, but when it came to the federal government and the state government laying down these rules and these guidelines, the board's hands were tied, okay? So a lot of parents didn't want their kids to, to wear masks. I understand that. But then if we take the masks off the kids and they, the school loses all its funding, then what? So that's the kind of issues you're talking about. If you don't comply, they could take away your funding. And then what? And there's no answer for the, and then what? And then you file a lawsuit and then you do this and then you do that, with what, where's that money coming from? Cause the taxpayers don't want to pay for the lawsuit to the state or to the federal government. So that's a very complex question. I hope and pray that we don't ever have to deal with that again and I hope and pray that if there is another pandemic, we've learned from our mistakes. Um, luckily we, everyone in this room came through it. Um, but uh, uh, if that were an issue in the future, I mean, I would obviously uh, take my medical expertise. I went through a lot of school getting As, Bs and Cs, well, I didn't get Cs, but As. Um, and uh, I don't take that lightly, I, I would, I would give my valid medical expertise, medical opinion on what I believe is true and what I believe is more government overreach.
Okay, thank you. So here kind of the follow-up for the rest of you. Brent, you'll be first on this one. Given the recent outbreaks of disease like measles, what role does the school have in keeping vulnerable students healthy?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's a healthcare issue that um, uh, is tied to all of our very personal beliefs. Um, I'm, I'm a believer in um, in expertise and, and in healthcare professionals who can give good recommendations, but at the same time, uh, I'm, I'm personally not a fan of, of mandates, whether they be vaccine mandates or, or whatever. Um, again, I, I think um, we should encourage uh, good healthcare practices. I, I mean, I think, I think somewhere on the school website, I saw there is a report that shows vaccine statistics for the district. There's like forty individuals who have religious exemptions for vaccines. I think that's fine. Um, but at the end of the day, I'm, I think we should do all we can to encourage vaccination for measles, vaccination for diseases that um, can, i- if we, if we do good health practices can be uh, you know, widely uh, reduced and eliminated, so.
Okay, thank you. Josh, I'm gonna come to you next.
Um, so speci- if, if this is a vaccinations question, if, if it's a question about getting sick in general, then the school should have good policies about, you know, if kids are sick, they should stay home and not come and, you know, hand the flu around or stomach viruses or whatever else. But, but, but i- in regards to that, I, I just think it's ki- it's the parents' deal. And so, you know, parents all do a cost-benefit analysis and um, and, and we vaccinated our kids and there are parents who don't and you know, I'm assuming that the parents who don't weigh the, you know, the, the benefit is that you're not susceptible to measles and the, and the, the, the uh, whatever, the cost is whatever. Um, and, and if, if, if the cost to any given parent outweighed the benefit, then I think that that's, that's the choice they made and they're free to make it. But, but I don't think that we, I don't think we need to go out of our way to um, to protect students that and, and, and that parents didn't choose to protect, cause, cause they, they chose to protect their kid from, from the vaccination because they saw harm in that, you know what I mean? And so I think that parents protect their kids in the way that they protect their kids and I don't think that we need to be, whatever, try to supersede that or, or whatever.
Thank you, Dan.
Um, I certainly think we, as a school district, we need to have a safe and uh, as healthy as possible environment, but when it comes to health, I think that's a, that's a family issue. That's for the parents. Um, I don't feel that's for the school, I don't feel that's for the government. I feel that's for us as parents. We're inter- we had our kids, we gotta answer for our kids. Um, I think we should be the ones protecting our children the way we best feel.
Okay, Renee.
Um, I'm also a healthcare professional, so I'll, I'll speak as that and just personally. Um, there's a lot of mandates that come out of Springfield and a lot of them are intrusive and oppressive. They cost money. Um, not just healthcare mandates, all sorts of mandates. We have to figure out how to try to implement them while also being responsible to our taxpayers and our constituents. And um, it's tricky. But as far as vaccinations go, uh, to my knowledge, the school has always, the state has always allowed an exemption. And I don't think that's changing anytime soon and I'm, I'm fine with that exemption. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next question. How will you nurture an educational experience for students that encourages curiosity and diversity of thought? And Josh, I'm gonna go to you. I think I've made it around. So how will you nurture an ed- an a- an educational experience for students that encourages curiosity and diversity of thought?
I'm not sure how uh, directly we would as, as board members, cause I'm not um, I don't, uh, I don't have a good idea of how closely the board interacts with students. Um, I don't, I did, when I was in high school, I didn't know who was on the board. Um, I found out when I came to, you know, the first board meeting and then they're hanging on the wall and so I look back, you know, to whatever, two thousand five, six, seven, eight, when I was in high school. Um, and that's when I found out. Uh, and so I, I think prob- probably primarily in our interactions with teachers. And you know, and making sure that they're providing that kind of space in their classroom and you know, and not allowing um, you know, maybe somebody who's in a minority opinion to get, to get trampled over by, by, you know, by kids who are in the majority.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Are we talking like gender identity and that kind of stuff or?
I think you can wait for the next question on that.
Well, I, I just kind of go back to my um, high school days. There was um, kids that had different thoughts and there were kids of different, me had different um, skin tones, had different um, thoughts than I did and I didn't think they were treated any different. I thought the teachers didn't treat them any different and they were able to get a good education. I just don't think we need as a school, um, need to dabble into that, um, kind of what's come to the forefront in our country. I think we need to, should leave that to the parents.
Okay, Renee.
Yeah, I think it's very important to have uh, diversity in education. Um, we serve a student population that is more and more diverse. Uh, we have a family now from Afghanistan attending our school, so they are not Christian, they're Muslim. Um, they should be represented as well. So um, basically, I think this, the teachers do a great job of bringing diversity into education. Um, and I, and I encourage that and I encourage kindness and respect for all students. No matter what diverse thought they might have.
Yeah, I mean, as, as a public school, we have public school teachers who are, who are operating on the, the principle of, of everybody has uh, a certain equal standing and equal voice, right? And so conversations in class should allow for that. Um, regardless of, of personal deeply held beliefs and, and religious beliefs and ideological beliefs. We can have a space that's uh, that's open and that allows for discussion, allows for people to learn. So I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that as well. I mean, the um, as we grow as a community, I mean, diversity, there's, is, is more ethically diverse, like you said, the Afghani family. Um, and having a space to be able to uh, voice our beliefs, uh, but also emphasize importance on not pushing them on one another. So like I mentioned, the Lifewise Academy. If you don't want your kid in the Lifewise Academy, don't put your kid in the Lifewise Academy. If the Afghani family would like to start a uh, Muslim program, I'm all for it. And if other people want to join a certain program, I'm all for it. I'm for all types of uh, um, groups and ideas and beliefs. Uh, it's the, the issue I have is when you start forcing it on others. We can provide as a, provide options and you can do what we, what you want with the options and I think a lot of that uh, is the parents at home and how they teach and, and bring their kids up. Um, I think the parents should have the majority of the power there. The, the board will, will not be forcing uh, the stuff on you guys.
Okay, thank you. Dan, you'll get the first qu- first crack at this one. If elected, how do you plan to deal with our state's progressively woke agendas? Now you can go.
Well, obviously I disagree with um, our state's woke agenda. And um, recently I did get a text from a parent with some of that's um, stuff about gender identity and uh, maybe some pronouns, I can't recall off the top of my head, but um, I think it's something we need to stand firm against um, as a school, as a community. And I think it takes all of us, isn't it just the board standing up against the state? I think us as parents, um, as a community, um, need to talk um, to our senators, to our congressmen. Get on the phone, stand up against it as well. If we all work together, I think we have a better opportunity um, to keep that uh, woke thought, if you want to call it. It's not really a woke thought, it's, a lot of us just wrong and yeah, just wrong. I don't think it needs to be on our schools. And if I was on the board, I would definitely vote not for it.
Okay, Renee.
Um, I, I don't find the word woke to be especially helpful because I'm not sure what it means, it depends on who you talk to. Um, what I am for is uh, referencing what Brent said, that we make space for every student, no matter what, no matter what they identify with or believe. It doesn't mean we're pushing it on anybody, it means we're respectful and kind. Um, that doesn't mean that we do everything that student wants. Um, we've had students who identify as a different gender and um, instead of having them go to the bathroom of the gender they identify with, we say, here's a, here's a private bathroom you can use. To me, that was just a really thoughtful way to deal with something that's really sensitive and what many people find offensive. So I think we can be creative and thoughtful and kind and respectful all at the same time. Thanks.
The uh, the issues that I, I don't know, that come to mind when I hear the term uh, woke, I guess I would kind of lump them. I lump about three areas together into uh, topics that really probably should be taught at home. Should have parents leading and guiding and forming the beliefs of their children. And it's, it's my opinion that the public school really, really shouldn't be involved in trying to form and lead a child's belief and, and really, to be clear, that's like religion, politics and ideological issues. And that cuts both ways, like that, that cuts both ways of like keeping this a space that is relatively free of religion, politics and ideology. But I think it's really up to parents and families to decide how they want to shape their child's beliefs in those areas. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and I kind of touched on that earlier, it's very important for the parents to be involved in this. They should be the decision-maker on what their child, what they're teaching their child, what they're uh, instilling beliefs in their children. It's important as we bring our children up to um, uh, teach them right and wrong. Um, it's a, again, it's a, it's a loaded question. Um, I'm against government overreach, if they're trying to force us to do something, uh, I would be voting against that. But what Renee's saying, to have a space where people can voice their beliefs, I think that's important. If you want to believe this way, go for it. If you want to believe this way, go for it. And then the issue will come to the board and the board again will vote and the majority will rule. Um, but to have a space to be able to, to express your beliefs, I think is important. Um, it's good to hear both sides. I know we can lean uh, more conservative in Tremont. Uh, and the rest of the nation does not really lean that way. Um, so I do feel that there's a value in hearing the other side, whether you agree with it or not. Um, and allowing their voices to be heard. Um, and ultimately uh, uh, it brings me, brings me back to their, the up- upbringing, your ch- your parents' involvement in the children uh, and what beliefs they're instilling in them. I don't think the uh, the public school has a, has a right to tell you what to tell your kids.
Josh.
Um. Well, I don't, uh, I don't think that, that sex or sexuality has any place in the grade school. Um, arguably not in the middle school, it's, it seems like more of a high school thing to me. And so I, I would pretty strongly oppose any kind of, I mean, I guess if that's what we're talking about. I'm a little with Renee, woke is kind of a loaded thing and, and it, and it depends who you talk to about what they mean and what, what they're concerned about, but, but we have concerns, my wife and I, about um, about whatever. I, I don't want anybody, any adults telling my, you know, my daughter that they can be whatever they want to be. Certainly not before they're, god, before they go through puberty, they don't even know what they are. I, I mean, you know, it's a confusing thing growing up. And uh, and, and so I don't think that um, that's at all appropriate for younger kids. Now, w- with that said, you know, uh, uh, high school kids, juniors and seniors are like adults, you know, they're seventeen, eighteen years old and they're, and they're gonna make decisions, uh, or may- maybe, probably, many of them make lifestyle decisions, you know, maybe even outside the realm of this specific conversation that um, that I don't agree with or, or that their classmates don't agree with. And you know, we, we don't need to have kids uh, bullied or ostracized or, or um, or whatever for, you know, just because they're, they're making a decision that I don't agree with or that their, their classmates don't agree with. So I think that there's maybe a line to walk there. Um, I, I feel much more strongly about, about younger kids, about the, the middle school and, and the grade school. I think that it's um, it's, it's pretty perverse to um, to in- involve kids in it's, it's, it's pretty perverse to, to involve kids in discussions about, about sexual orientation or gender identity. But, 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 you know, we can't control the choi, control what, you know, what, what, what high school kids feel, and certainly adults. They're eighteen-year-olds in, in the school, and they're gonna feel what they're gonna feel. And, you know, and I don't think that they should be, whatever, run out of school on a rail because, you know, because I don't like their life choices.
Okay. Thank you. This is our last question, okay? Because we are at the 8:30 mark. And this question starts off with a thank you to each of you for stepping up and putting your name on the ballot. So thank you for that. The question is, what is an area of, what is an area of your life that you have been intentionally, intentional about for personal growth? So what in your area, what is an area of your life that you have been intentional about for personal growth? And Renee, I'll start with you.
My mental health. We've had some really hard things in our family the last year. And I'm, I'm proactive about my mental health, because I have eight children and six grandchildren. And it's really important that I not go nuts. So I try to, I try to prioritize that. And my spiritual growth, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Brent?
Um, yeah, I don't know how, how applicable this is to, to the board, but I guess as a candidate, it's informative, you know? This is kinda random, but I'm, I'm just trying to, lately, I'm trying to read more books. I'm trying to, to just learn more. I've hit forty and kind of realized, like, I spend a lot of time working and try to spend a fair amount of time with my family. But where I can, I'm trying to carve out a little more time to, to read of a variety of, of topics and continue to learn. I, I think, I think that might even be part of the mission of, or vision of, like, creating lifelong learners here. So unintentionally, I guess, I'm trying to do that. I'm trying to be a lifelong learner.
Uh, mine would be my faith, just growing in my relationship with my Savior, Jesus, and trying to be a light to others. I, I mean, I do that at work. If I have to see a patient and tell them, yeah, you have a tumor on your kidney. I don't know what it is, but we're gonna figure out, figure it out. And I just, I don't know if they're a believer or, or not, but I'll, I'll offer to pray for them. Not one person has turned me down, right? So whether they believe what I believe, I'm not forcing it on them. I just am offering it to them. Here, I just gave you some really bad news. Can I pray for you? And I found it very valuable, and it's actually helped me grow. Patients, and people in general, when they're broken and they feel vulnerable, they can be screaming for help but making no noise. And me, growing in my faith, studying and learning, has been able to minister to others. And I, and I, and that's something I'm gonna continue, I hope, for many, many years, because that's, that's a daily, that's a daily process.
Thank you. Josh?
Um, probably family. I, I don't know if I'm maybe as intentional as I ought to be, but I, that's probably the most important thing to me, is, is, is I wanna be a good husband, and I wanna be a good dad. And so, so that, that's my, that's my priority. I like, I like getting home and wrestling with my kids. And I like, you know, tell my kids to shut up and get out of the room so I can talk to their mom. And, and that's, 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 that's the stuff.
Thank you. And Dan?
Um, first and foremost, probably be my faith. I try to grow theirs and focus on that as much as I can. Older I get, less important work is and more important family is. Last, last year or so, or actually, last six months, had a lot of change in our life. My wife and I are empty nesters, and last week, we had our first granddaughter. So just trying to be healthier for them as well, and focus on my family. Because having a grandbaby's pretty special.
Cool. Cool, cool. All right, that is going to conclude the evening. First of all, I wanna thank all of you for coming and, and putting in questions, as we did not get to all of them. So we apologize for that. The candidates will be around, and if you want that question asked, you can mingle with them. There's still some drinks and snacks in the back. Help yourself. But let's give a round of applause to these candidates for stepping up and being in front.
We were gonna do a round of closing remarks. I, I do think that the buyout, the bio that goes around kinda has the, why should you elect this person? So it kinda covers that. But like he said, they will be around if you wanna chat a little bit more. I did wanna thank everyone again. Thank you to Tim Barrow for moderating tonight. He's great at what he does. Thanks to the PTO for sponsoring the event. Please grab a cookie on the way out, or as you stand around and chat. Early voting, by the way, I was gonna mention this. If you wanna do early voting, they do have it at the community center here in town the next two Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Friday, the fourteenth and twenty-first, from nine to six. Saturday, the fifteenth and twenty-second, and Sunday, the sixteenth and twenty-third, from nine to three. So you can vote early. Election Day is April first. There's also some dates that you could go to the county clerk's office in Pekin and vote early if you'd like. And if you go to the county website, you can find those dates and times. So let's have one more round of applause for our candidates. They did a great job, and had some tough questions tonight. And thank you all for coming, and feel free to hang around and chat.